Good evening. I will open this Township Council Agenda Meeting of August 2nd, 2022 to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 22nd, 2021, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the daily record on December 28th, 2021, and the New York Star Ledger on December 27th, 2021. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipani.net. Would you all please join me in the flags?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Ms. Graniani.
Here.
Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Also in attendance are Business Administrator Fred Carr, Mayor James Barbario, Township Attorney Michael Avery, Township Clerk Collette Madden, Council President, we have a quorum, you may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, August 16th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m., a regular meeting, September 6th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m., our agenda meeting. Presentations and reports, Mayor?
I'm not in a report right now.
Township Council, anything?
If I may, please.
Mrs. Graniani?
It's an honor to announce that Dee DePiero will be receiving the first Woman of the Year Award from the Morris County Women's Republican Club this Saturday. This is an honor that I believe and I feel is bestowed upon Dee for her contribution to the Republican Party all the years that she has volunteered her time, and she will be receiving the award on Saturday afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I still have on my agenda Lee Kymel Street. Mayor, are we gonna set that up sometime soon?
Yeah, I'm gonna be meeting, I have to meet with our township engineer with regards to several issues, and that's one of them that's on it. The other one is North Pepperick Road, which I would like to speak to you about.
Okay.
So that'll be, I'll be meeting with him next week.
Okay, thank you. Township Attorney?
No report, Council President.
Business Administrator?
No, sir.
Township Clerk?
No report. Council President?
Township Officers and Committees?
Yes, I met with the Municipal Transparency Committee last week, and they will be sending over their minutes to the administration very soon.
Okay, thank you.
And, may I?
Sure.
I met with the Library Committee, and they're gonna be coming to us at the next council meeting with estimates on some of the repairs they need done at the facility in Lake Hiwatha.
Right. I think we scheduled that for August.
In fact, that's what, yeah, after...
Two weeks.
Right.
And it'll be a handout, I asked them if it would be a PowerPoint presentation or a handout, and they said a handout.
Yes, they said a handout.
Bids taken, 7/20/2022, base bid well redevelopment services for wells 10, 4, and 4A, and pumping system replacements for wells 10, 4, and 4A, and supplemental bid well redevelopment services for well 17 and pumping system replacements for well 17. Bids to be taken, 8/4/2022, 1/20/23, or newer freightliner, S2C medium-duty bus or equivalent with ambulatory seats. On 8/16/2022, well 1A replacement. Now I'll entertain a motion to open a meeting to the public.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Graniani, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
The floor is open to the public on any matter, you have five minutes to speak.
Could I sign after?
Is there a sign in here?
There is a sign, I can sign.
Sure, you can sign.
Signing after.
Sure. Good evening, hi. I have two things. Judy Hernandez, 5 Marine Road. In June I came before you and asking about the environmental resources inventory, and I also sent out some information, and I was wondering if there's been any comments or movement on it. I know it's the dog days of summer, so maybe not, because I know the Highlands Council did offer some grant opportunities and manpower. So I just wanted to put it out there that we're still hoping that we could, you could, the planning board could...
And you are correct, it's in the dog days of summer.
Right. Okay, so we'll wait on that.
But it is on the list.
Okay, wonderful. I do have comments that I just want to mention from the last meeting that when I was sitting here, and I didn't say anything, and I laughed, so just bear with me because I wrote them down. At the last council meeting, I felt there were some unfair negative comments thrown about regarding the status of the town's budget in 2017 being wrecked by the administration that followed. The mayor, at the time you stated that the town, you left with a $22 million surplus, and you claimed that the Soriano administration squandered that surplus. Where is the evidence of this $22 million surplus? In 2010 sewer fees were reduced, and utilities revenue and surplus began decreasing, yet the town continued to take more of the surplus. The utilities were forced to incur debt to cover operating and repair expenses. Up until 2017, the utilities incurred $15 million in long-term debt and interest. There can be justifications for debt in the short term, but to borrow to offset taxes, taxes and other forms of revenue should be used for operating and shorter-term expenses. Your previous tenure did not follow this principle. So taking surpluses instead of assessing reasonable incremental tax increases and failing to raise sufficient tax, sufficient revenue made the town dependent on the surplus and borrowing. Two years of zero tax increases in 2013 and 2017, which council approved, created no revenue but $6 million in additional expenses. So if my math is correct, that's $21 million in debt in 2017. So I'm just wondering where the $22 million in surplus was in 2017.
First, I'd like to answer your question on that, Judy. And when you use negative comments about the previous administration, you had no issue during the campaign calling us crooks and criminals.
I was...
Excuse me.
I didn't call you...
You spoke, yes you did, and corrupt and all that kind of stuff, so that's negative. So let's just, let's make that clear, so. But if you go back to the audit reports, and you look at the audit reports from 18, 19, 20, and 21, you will see the significant amount of surplus that was taken from the utilities. Excuse me, you got to speak, now it's my turn.
I'm not saying...
Okay, you were getting ready to. So let's just go to 2000, let's go to 2019, let's go to 2019 and 20, where there was a significant amount of surplus that was withdrawn from the utilities, more than I've ever withdrawn.
No, incorrect.
Excuse me, no, I'm not incorrect, they have the numbers right here.
Show me.
I'm gonna show it to you, I'm gonna give it to you.
Show up data at the next meeting.
I'm gonna give it to you.
Please.
No, I will give it to you.
Okay.
The fact of the matter is that our debt service increased 64% from 2017 all the way to 2020, 21, by 64%, okay? So the debt service is up, and we still have to pay that back, okay? But to sit here and say that the mayor, the former mayor, did not use surplus to balance his budget is false.
I did not say that.
What you're saying...
You said that's true.
No, that's exactly what you're saying.
You said...
So I'm gonna, I'm going to...
That meeting, and it's on tape, that you said $22 million was squandered.
If you notice in the audit reports, if you notice in the audit reports, we replenished it.
I'm not hearing...
But no, you are, you are here.
Guys, okay, this is not a back and forth, it cannot be a back and forth, Council President, you need to...
The, the, I'm sorry.
You don't have to be sorry.
It said last, you said last time that $22 million...
Yes, there was...
Was squandered in 2017.
I'll give you the figures right now, Judy. I'm gonna give you the figures right now.
Right.
Here they are, 2000, 2017, there was $5,588,000 on the current fund, okay? And the water utility in 2017, 1231, there was $6,301. And the sewer utility, there was $9,850. And in the null, the golf utility, there was $1,561,000.
Make it public, please.
Okay, so, so what happened?
Public, please.
As of 2020, it went down to $1 million, the current fund, 1.9 in water, and 2.8 in sewer, and 1.7 in the null. So how did that happen?
With all due respect, if you're borrowing money for your whole tenure, and that debt comes due after you're gone...
Judy, but we replenished it. Just, all you gotta do is go online, go online, look at the audit reports.
Show it to the public, and also, will the budget meetings be open to the public?
Yes, the meetings are definitely open to the public.
Steve Mandell, 29, Lord Sterling Drive. I'm gonna read it, makes it easier. "I've been a resident of Parcipani for almost 50 years and have benefited from many services that our taxes provide. As such, I understand that costs go up, and as our town's expenses go up, so must our taxes to pay for numerous services. Tonight I'd like to address the statements previously made about defunding the police. Politicizing the police does not work for either political party. In fact, when have you ever had a policeman ask you if you were a Republican or a Democrat? As to crime in Parcipani, according to the official statistics provided to the New Jersey State Police, between 2017 and 2020, crime in Parcipani actually decreased by 35%. For your information, if you're interested, I've charted it and can give it to you." Going to the budget, "Like to turn your attention to Sheet 14 of the budget. There you will see that in 2021, the total expenditure for the police was $16,437,424. The proposed budget for 2022 shows a total of $16,255,169, or a decrease of $182,000 and some odd dollars. What's interesting about the 2022 budget is that of that budget, $2,763,763 of the budgeted amount is from the efforts of the previous mayor and Congresswoman Sherrill, who worked with the Biden administration to provide those funds under Arthur, as it is stated in the budget. My question to you, Mr. Mayor, is where are we going to get the funds to replace the Arthur money in 2023?"
Okay, Mr. Mandell, with regard, I'll start with that question. Yes, there was $2 million, that was that American Rescue Plan dollars, I think that's what you're speaking about, correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, the past administration used that as a source of revenue, when really it shouldn't have been used as a source of expenses or road repairs or police department, but they used it as revenue. So this year, we have to use it as revenue as well, because like you're saying now, where are we gonna come up with the money? It's the same thing this year. We have to use another $2.7 million in revenue, to use it as revenue, instead of using it for really what we should be able to use it for, because that, we'd have to cut another $2.7 million from the budget. So what we had to do was we had to take the $2.7 million, and then we had to appropriate an additional $2.7 million in expenses into the capital. So that offsets it for next year, and we hopefully wish to start at ground zero, okay? There's nothing we could have done because it was used as revenue, and you're absolutely correct. If, if we're gonna get the revenue next year, well, that was the only way to do it, was to appropriate the expense, so we did that. Let's go back to the police department. When I made the comment, when I made with regards to it, there was no new hires made when individuals retired. So now we're down to 81 deployable police officers. I was the mayor for eight years, and one thing I was, I was proud of was public safety, okay? So we're down to 81 deployable police officers, we have 90-something police officers somewhere out injured. So what we're doing, we're implementing is when a police officer retires, we hire right away. And in that budget, that's $16,200, whatever you came up with, $255,000, $16,255,000, there's police officers in that budget to hire. We're gonna have a lot of retirements going forward. We have, you know, we had one today, we're gonna have another one at, at the end of the year, and another one in February sometime, so we have to plan for that. So that's what this budget does, going into next year. So we're going to replace those police officers, we have to maintain our numbers, or we're just not gonna be able to catch up. So with the $2.7 million, like I said to you before, that's the only way we can start at ground zero next year, because I could tell you right now, the budget was so bad that we were $8.5 million in the hole, so you can't cut your way to prosperity. And I, and I recognize that. And we need to maintain our services, and the only other way to do that was to, was to decrease the, the budget, was to lower off an actual astronomical amount of individuals, cut out the community center, and possible recreation. I wasn't gonna do that.
You, you heard what I said. So... I'm a taxpayer, I like the services, things go up. I expect my taxes to go up. I don't like it, but I expect it.
Well, I'm, I'm just telling you what, what we had to do with this budget. I pulled it once from being introduced, because I wanted to, I wanted to submit the right budget for the township, and I felt the budget that was submitted on July 20th was, was the right budget for the residents to go forward and to get us out of the hole.
Thank you.
Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiwatha. I couldn't make the, the budget meeting, but in 2018, Councilwoman Janice McCarthy, McCarthy clearly explained what was going on with the budget, with the water and sewer surplus. She made it very clear. At that same time, that money was being used in the water and sewer surplus, your water infrastructure deteriorated, literally collapsed. One, two, three, four, five, six, at least seven wells, pipes, different things were breaking. Now, water's a public trust, which means that the water that's being held in trust, the money that, excuse me, being held in trust for water and its infrastructure was a public trust too. So that was like taboo, that should have never, you should have never touched that money. So you mean to tell me that Parcipani, not only during Soriano's mayorship, where we experiencing COVID and everything, but all that water infrastructure broke down, and we just didn't have to pay anything, just, oh, bloody, build back better America, yeah, the gangster, the gangsters in Washington gave us the money that we needed. So you're bickering back and forth on a local level, like I said, the problem is at a higher level. Because the, the country that you pledged that flag to doesn't, doesn't care about you and me, it cares about the, the corporate power, and giving to them, to their CEOs and everything, so, you know, it's, it's a big problem. So on a local level, I don't understand why, I don't even understand why we need a Democrat and a Republican on a, on a local level. The issue should be Parcipani. But you can still Google Janet's article, it's in the focus, and you can read that. And that, and that was my contention, the money moving out of the water and sewer surplus being used for other purposes. And to me, that was, I guess you could say that was a form of a shady, I don't know if it was corrupt, because I don't know what corrupt is anymore in America. I have a, a thing here, when they did the Rockaway River, I gotta switch channels here, when they did that re-snagging work, and we were here and we were talking about the bats and the migratory birds, well, there's been a complaint filed, and I don't know what the outcome is gonna be, because it took four weeks for him to get back to me. But apparently, the contractor that this town hired to do that work didn't have the proper permits, and the telltale is, if they did, they wouldn't be allowed to proceed with that work during the time court that they did. Now the same thing happened at Water View, they're taking down trees. We have an Indiana, we have bats around here, we may have some Indiana bats left, but we're in 10 miles of the hyperbarium. So, you know, the, the world is not just people, cats, and dogs, there's a lot of other diversity out there. And as much as Parcipani is overdeveloped, we still have some, some wildlife that we, we should consider. But what can be done? Do we need an ordinance? Do we have to specify somewhere in our rules that on public property, we can't have these trees or work being done during certain time periods? Because apparently, they just do it. I don't know, you, you pick the cheapest contractor, and he, he just does the work, oh, bloody, oh, bloody, he doesn't obey the rules? I don't think that's...
Well, if they don't have to obey the rules, you know, and you know that ahead of time, you could do a stop worker on those types of things, I, you know, you bring this to my attention right now, so...
Well, we brought it up before, but when I got the email back, see, everybody's self-service now. I, I told my friend in NJDEP, I thought he would look into it. Then he gets back to me three weeks later, I have to do it. Even though he knows there was probably a violation, I have to do it. So, self-service. But anyway, I did do it because we shouldn't be doing things like that. The world is getting more and more simplified, more and more polluted, and the diversity of life, we're injuring the diversity of life, and we're suffering all these diseases and everything because we don't, everything is money. The only value in life is money, and that's, that's sad. All right.
Nick, I think the, the trees that were taken down along Whole Foods was done by the power company, and they have a right to...
No, I'm talking about when it developed, when they...
Oh, what it was, you're going back to when it was developed?
Yeah, when they, when it hit the hill, when it was forested, or...
Okay.
Wooded, not forested, wooded.
Yeah, there was a commotion when they, when the Whole Foods was there, along the roadway, the power company came and cut down some trees and some branches to protect their power lines.
Yeah, they might, well, I don't know if they did it in the right time, but if you look at some of the trees they took out of the, the Rockaway River too, it doesn't look like there's anything wrong with the trees.
Yeah.
And trees are becoming more important now than they ever were on this planet.
True. Okay, thank you.
Could some of those trees be the ashcore tree, trees that had the insect that had it taken down? Trees that come down?
I don't know, it was a general statement.
My name is Barney Clarkin, I live at 31 Flintlock Road, I've been a resident for over 35 years, and I'm a certified public accountant. The reason I'm standing here tonight is about the budget. My concern at this meeting is that the municipal budget was recently introduced, and you guys are considering it. What I have read in the Parcipani focus and other places is that it's a 3.3% tax increase. Now, I took the time to print out the budget, review it, which I have done in prior years from time to time, and it's actually a 14.3% increase. That is such a huge difference from 3.3% to 14.3%. I have to question how you could possibly declare that it's a 3.3% increase. I will also add that, once again, a million five was taken out of the sewer utility fund to get to that number, which I thought was no longer going to be, that game was no longer going to be played, but we're back to that. So basically, my concern here is, why don't we just be straightforward and say exactly what the numbers are, rather than bending them around? I'm a numbers guy, and that's what's going on here.
Okay, you weren't at the last meeting, but I did explain the 14.63%. That's the tax levy increase. What that basically means is, that's the, that's the amount that the budget has increased from this year to last year. But the tax rate and implication on the residents is 3.3% increase.
I disagree.
Well, you can disagree, but that's, that's the tax levy...
I looked at the numbers.
There's a difference between the tax levy and the tax rate.
I looked at the numbers, Mayor.
I know, I saw the numbers too, and I, and I, and I made it transparent.
It's 14.3%.
I'm not a CPA, you are, and if...
All right.
Yeah, the budget increased 14.63%, but the impact on the resident, on the average house assessed at 312, you can nod your head all you want, but these are facts. At 212,297, the average tax increase is 319 miles a year, and that's $26.5 cents a month on a resident. And that's, that's a fact.
I disagree, because it's there in black and white in the budget, it's...
Yeah, it says it.
3.3% municipal tax increase.
But if, if you look where it says the 14.63%, there's another page that shows you the 3.3% on the taxpayer. So you must have missed that page.
No, I didn't miss the page.
All right, I think you might have, because...
No, I didn't miss the page.
I was pretty transparent in the last meeting. So if you want to come to my office, I'll go over the book with you, I know pretty much the heart.
Well, maybe we'll do that, right?
Okay, no, I have no issue with that, that would be good.
Okay, that would be interesting.
You could teach me about accounting, and I could teach you about the budgets.
Maybe we can do that, but it's very clear, and I hope the council has seen this, that it's a 14.3% tax increase. Thank you very much.
We're very aware of that, but what, what you're not understanding is, our municipal budget increase is 14.3%.
Right.
Municipal.
I understand that.
Okay, that doesn't mean your taxes are going up by 14.3%.
Well, if that's the line...
Because your taxes are based upon the school board, the county, open space, and the municipal.
Right, and if I might respond to what you just said.
And that brought the number down, your, your, the actual homeowners will see the 3.8%. And that's the difference.
And even if you were to use that argument, it's still...
It's not an argument.
Okay, that position, how's that? That position, it didn't go up by 3.3%, it went up between 5 and 6% if you take that position, but I think most people understand, you are not responsible for the county budget, and you're not responsible for the Board of Education budget. So that doesn't, that's not what we're talking about here, right?
Okay.
We're talking about municipal. And by the way, even if you did that, it doesn't come to 3.3%.
No, it comes out, when you add it all in, it comes out to 4.68%. You're absolutely correct. And I, listen, this, I, with all due respect, I know you're, you continue to nod your head, but I've given you facts, so if you fight to come to my office, we could sit down, go through the budget, I have no issue with that.
Okay, let's, let's end, let's end it.
Thank you.
Bob Vinesia, 102 Brookon Drive. "When the previous administration introduced its first budget four years ago, Mayor Soriano described the township's finances as a mess, due to the mismanagement and fiscal irresponsibility of his predecessor. Two weeks ago, the current administration belatedly introduced its initial budget, and once again, all we heard is how the previous administration mismanaged the township's finances. Frankly, both mayors and the council contributed to the mess that we're in today. For example, both mayors misused surpluses in the water and sewer utilities in order to keep general budget tax rates artificially low. That practice probably would have continued today, except that there are no utility surpluses left to transfer. For the past five years, budget introductions have been long on finger-pointing and short on substance. Please stop that now. The taxpayers of Parcipani want to hear concrete solutions to our budgetary problems and timeframes for when we can expect tax rate increases to again settle down into the range of other towns in Morris County." Thank you.
If I may respond, Council President?
Mayor?
Okay, with regards to, yeah, you're absolutely right, there's only one administration, I can't blame the other administration, that's George Washington's, because there was no one, but that being said, with regards to moving forward, if you were at the last meeting, I gave you my plan, what I planned on doing... and I gave you my plan, what I planned on doing. And one of the things we have to do, Bob, is we have to bring in commercial properties here. We have to figure out how we're going to take our infrastructure that is outdated, antiquated, and bring in ratables to the township. That is, that's the only way. Because we're not going to get funding from the state, and we're not going to get increased funding from the state, so we have to create our own. So what we're trying to do, and I've met with many developers, because that's my job. And every time I meet with a developer, someone says, I'm back touring the town. No. That's my job. That's what I'm supposed to do. I'm trying to get the least impact to the township. And I'm happy to say that I've met with four that are going to be a positive ratable to the town. We spoke about one a few weeks ago, which was Woodmont Properties, which is age-restricted, which is memory care, and that's going to increase our ratables by a significant amount of money within the next two, three years. All right, that's one way out, and that's probably the only way we're going to get out of this mess. And of course, we're going to, we're going to have a plan going forward. We're going to look at all our expenses, but this year was very difficult. And I, and I said that from day one. I said it when I ran. Whoever is the mayor, going forward, is going to have a very difficult time. Okay? But going forward, of course, I blame the previous administration, because I know it was mismanaged, and I can prove it was mismanaged. But that being said, after this year, the onus is on me. Going two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and two thousand twenty-five.
That's what I wanted to hear, and I think that's what people in Parsipony want to hear, that this will be the end of finger pointing. And, you know, you own it now, for next year. Thanks.
Anybody else wish to speak?
I guess I'd say one more thing. I'm sorry. I'm on a roll, Mr. Council President. You heard that crime statistics went down over the last four years. And, and I will tell you this, and the reason why the rates were down over, and you can, and you averaged them is because COVID. COVID affected a lot of townships. But that being said, if crime goes down, it's not my administration that reduces crime. It's not the previous administration. It's the, the men and women in the police department who, who lower our crime, the men in the back, all those. Those are the individuals that do it. It's no mayor, and it's no council. It's them.
Okay. See where no one else can forward? I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion.
Motion.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Mysala.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Okay, all these other riders will be voting on at our regular meeting in two weeks. So we get to approval of payroll and bills list.
Approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Juan Uribe recommends authorization for payment. Authorized payment of the eight-five-twenty-two regular payroll estimated at one million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Payment of bills from vouchers, list of eight-one-twenty-two through eight-three-twenty-two, estimating total one million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirteen and twenty-eight cents. Motion to approve the authorized for payment above by myself.
Seconded. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Mysala. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Mysala.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the ultimate motion?
Motion to adjourn the meeting by myself. Second.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Mysala.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
We're adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.